Hello, everyone. I'm Mike O'Reilly, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And welcome to the regular meeting for July 18th. It's 7:04 PM. And if you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, our God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, thank you. We'll pull the roll, starting on my right. Brian Condon, Commissioner.
Ryan Ambrosi, Commissioner.
Bruno Mayini, Commissioner.
Robert Westlin, Commissioner.
Thomas Noonan, Zoning Enforcement Officer.
Catherine Gallagher, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
And do we have a separate reporting section?
No.
Do you have Catherine Gallagher?
Someone from staff now listens to the meeting minutes and takes the meeting minutes ago.
And that's one, two, three. We have all seated members here. All right, so general public participation. If anyone in the audience or online would like to address the commission for any concerns that are not on the agenda for tonight, this is the time to do that. So anyone here, please raise your hand. Anyone online, please use the hand raising button. General public participation is now open. I don't see any hands, so general public participation is now closed. Moving on to public hearings. First public hearing, SCP 2018-03A4, 205 Monroe Turnpike. This is a continuation from 6/20/24. Now for the applicant.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everyone. Off the record, my name is Luke Morrow. I am a Senior Project Manager with Solely Engineering LLC, office at Fire and Main Street in Monroe. I am a professional engineering associate in technology and also professional traffic operations manager. So, as you all recall, I presented our applications for our self, four-story self-storage building in the rear of the 205 Monroe Turnpike Belchie Shopping Center. One oriented building here. We have Noble Gas in the front, Sklera, and then Aldi, which is under construction in the front. And then this self-storage, if you recall, as proposed to replace the formerly proposed medical office building. After our presentation and public comments and questions we got from you guys at last month's meeting, I just wanted to supplement with some of the information that was requested and some updated architecturals that were requested by the commissioners or also some perspective on such guests. And that's it. So I will cover some of the technical questions first, and then I will pass it over to Frank, whoever is on for the architects team. He will go through some of the changes to the architectural. If he can answer some of the more direct questions, if I have any concern, describe the changes and provide my answers to you. So before I pass it over to Frank, and I think we also summarized some of the, and the sort of memory we got this afternoon from her. So I'll just go through the silly evidence packet, something opened up that were addressed at last month's meeting. There was a question, if there are bathrooms in the building, how many bathrooms will there be? So there will be, just go to the floor here. There will be two bathrooms within the office space of a first-floor building. One will be reserved for office staff only. The other one will be open to the public who are using the self-storage facilities. Will the facility be open 24 hours a day? The answer is no. General hours of operation are six in the morning to 10 at night, seven days a week. And then will be staffed from eight to five. So most of the time, if it's open to the public, there will be a staff member there, except for a couple of the early hours of the morning and then after that.
That's also staffed on the weekends?
Correct. Yep, same as. Will there be security cameras? Yes, are they going to be filming adjacent residential labor yards? No, that's not the intent of the security cameras. The cameras themselves are typically situated at the corners of the building, really to look over the parking lot as security measures over the building entrances and everything. And there's also security cameras inside the facility as well, around the office building. Nothing to aim at any of the rest of the properties adjacent to the park. How will access to the building work? So there will be a secured access with a keypad entry in the loading dock area to get into the building. And the stairs themselves are for emergency egress at default pace. So the primary entrance to the building, to the loading dock, will be a keypad on our standing, meaning the office will also be open when there is someone, a staff member there. Let's see, where are the mechanicals located? I said they thought they were on the roof. We confirm the mechanicals will be located on the roof of the building. And a couple other questions, or a couple of questions, I should say, that were made by a gentleman from the public, from the public, sorry, in regards to some of the landscaping. So we did, I said we would do so, and we did revise our plan. So we have a typical evergreen buffer planting standard on the north side of the building. The request was made by, I believe, this neighbor over here. Mike and Fred and the development team had listened to the neighbors' concerns previously, and what you see here is a double row of arborvitae on top of the other string of plantings that were planted on the hillside over here. So we're going to do the same thing, screen the self-storage building. We'll have our typical evergreen shrubs and then also a double row of 10-foot-high arborvitae to help further buffer the building from the view. So you're talking three to four evergreen shrubs between the property line and the building itself, all along this northern side to help screen the building from view. And with that, I believe that answers all the questions in regards to public comment, commission comments, and then any outstanding items from engineering and planning. And with that, I will hand it over to Frank, and then bring up the revised architectures. Frank, it's all yours.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here. I am Frank Weber. I am an architect with GMA Architects. We've had a working relationship with Arco for about 30 years. I've been involved with self-storage projects extensively for the last eight years. As you can see on the elevation, so we've listened to the comments, and we've made some material changes and color changes. Color predominantly to blend in with the adjacent retail buildings. We've also accentuated some of the steps and the parapets, just to break up the massing. And Luke, if you want to go to the rendering. Continue to the next one. Okay, yeah, so we've added the renderings per your request. So this gives you a better idea of the massing and the color of the project, just to, you know, break up the articulation, make it look like less of a box. I understand, you know, this project type does not lend itself well to a lot of windows, so we try to use those where we can. And then beyond that, we use changes in materials to break up the building mass. So that essentially were the changes that were made to the building design.
There was also a request of what the building would look like as we're coming from the road turnpike going southbound here. So you can see the entrance pylon sign over here, Noble, on the back on the left. And then what you would see kind of the top of the building up in the back, this would be Aldi. So top floor likely could be seen until those trees kind of start to grow in. These will be new plantings that are going to be planted there as part of the Aldi parking lot as well. Eventually, they'll kind of fill and screen that building from 752, from Monroe Turnpike as well. There was also one request. We tried as best as we could to get a view of what it would look like from the neighbor's property in the rear. Obviously, you want to trespass onto their property. So we tried as best as we could to get a screenshot kind of from the street with so many existing plant trees here. You can see the rows of arborvitae that are provided along the rear. Actually, at the start, likely you'll see, you know, the top of the building, but they tend to grow one to two feet per year. So after a couple of years, it is our assumption that the building will be screened from the view, screen Hill Road and those residences in the rear. And if there's any questions, I think the last thing I want to do is the request from from the fire department to see if a truck turn over the committee that that reinforced turf access to the south side of the building. So we provided a truck turning template showing that the flat truck so that you can get south side ability and then back out, then it's on the site without any issue. I believe that responds to all of the open issues that were brought up at the last meeting, and we can certainly take any of the further questions or comments.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. That does address all the questions that I had. But we'll go to the commissioners first for additional questions, starting on my right.
No questions.
What about the hours of operation?
So general hours of operation will be 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And then will be, there will be someone in the office from eight to five.
Seven.
There'll be someone in the office from eight to five.
Eight to five.
In the office, but the facility itself will be open from six to 10. So overnight hours, it's the early hours of the morning.
There'll be no access between those hours, right?
Correct.
That's all. Okay, Commissioner Mayini.
I think it's really nice. Mike, I just, one stupid little question. One more. There we go. Those trees right there, and the, right next to that arrow.
Yes.
Those are not 10 feet, right? Those are bigger. So are you putting them in at that size?
Ten, ten, the, in order to prevent the kind of, I mean, you can buy them bigger, but generally, the larger they go, the harder it is for them to kind of take. And we don't have time off, so we try to start with an eight to 10-foot tree. And they grow one to two feet per year. I believe, and Frank already deferred to you, but I believe as shown, these are meant to be 10 to 12-foot trees. You can correctly from the statement.
Yes, they are based on the landscape plan.
Yes, so they would grow and fill in for one to two additional feet per year.
Those right there, you're telling me are?
In the background.
No, no, I was talking about the ones right there in the island.
And for.
Right there.
Those are meant to mitigate existing trees of the property, as best as they can from the street.
Right, so those are, you're planting those?
No, no, those are already.
Those are existing?
Those are. Yep.
Those are based on the best height we can get from Google Earth and from, you know, like a Google street view.
The best we can do without trespass.
No, no, I totally understand. Glad you didn't trespass. It's really, really smart of you. I just, okay, now I understand a little clearer.
Yeah, so the larger trees you see, you know, the apples and the maples, those are all meant to represent existing. And then it's kind of hard to see that those in the background would be what's going to be, you know, the time of the world and kind of fill in the gaps more.
So can you go back to the street view one, please? All right, so those plantings, are those the ones you're talking are going to be towards eight to 10 feet also? Or are those different?
These were part of, let me see the sign here. These are part of the, actually part of the Aldi application, so we have to see.
Well, those are Aldi plants?
Yeah, that's the forward part of the parking lot is without Aldi. As you're aware, that's under construction now, so those are going to go in.
I'd like to share.
I do have some other ones that kind of finished lining up there. It looks like they are. No, actually, they're, they're not, they're not specified by height, they're specified by.
Caliper.
Caliper, yeah, two and a half to three-inch caliper. So I'll be frank with you, I don't know what the height is. To me, for that one, but probably, probably also eight to 10 feet, I would assume, maybe a little bit bigger than that.
Okay.
Said probably a little bigger than that. It's also like, it's, it's, it's very much in front, it's in that parking lot, so it's much closer to you. And then you're looking up at it at an angle, so I think those look bigger than what they actually are, but I think they're screening.
That's kind of what I was thinking, I was thinking.
They're shown to screen, probably.
But I was thinking they're probably going to be, probably closer to six feet would be my guess, is what you're going to originally put in, because when you're sitting down this far low, looking that.
So those aren't evergreens, those are ornamental trees there. So it wouldn't have to be much of, as much, more dire. Screening purposes, so I'm not going to take it longer.
I really like what you guys did with the building and adjusting that. That was, that was well, well done. And you said the mechanicals are going on the roof.
On the roof, yep.
Do you, do you have a picture of the front of the building? We can't see the mechanicals, right, from the front of the building? They're going to be below the facade of some sort?
Yeah, given the relative elevation of the adjacent grade, the parking lot and the parapet, the lowest parapet we have is roughly 18 inches. The step parapets are about a little over 24 to 26. Your line of sight at that height, the units typically sitting on the curb are no more than 40 to 42 inches high, so you will not see them.
Awesome.
Yeah, I mean, that is a common question on all of these buildings. And typically, a three-story building is tall enough. Again, your line of sight, given that you're at grade or below grade, you will not see the rooftop units.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
I'm good. And thank you, Frank.
Okay, anybody on the staff end?
I'd just like to read some of the exhibits into the record. The first one is the revised set of plans by Solely Engineering dated July 9, 2024. We did receive a letter from Metro COG stating that based on the review of the proposed, they're calling a zoning text amendment, but it's for the self-storage facility. It's determined that the proposed amendments are not reasonably significant. However, special attention to wetlands and watercourses resources should be considered to minimize threats to the ecosystem, which we are doing. This did recently just get wetland approval. There's several conditions in that approval in order to accommodate for that. And we do have an engineering comment memo from Town Engineer James DeMayo saying that all of his previous and outstanding comments have been addressed. And then also Planning and Zoning Administrator memo from myself. All of my comments have been satisfied at the conclusion of this meeting. The only thing, and I apologize if you guys have addressed this and I can't remember, EMS had some concerns about the stretcher being able to navigate through the building. Was that ever reviewed?
It was, so we brought those, that question to the architect. And the hallway corridors are designed for ADA access.
Okay.
You know, requirements for any emergency or medical personnel. So they'll be able to accommodate structures and, you know.
Excellent. And then there was a letter from Kathy Lindstrom that was submitted this afternoon, 7:18, and she had asked that it be read into the record. If now's the right time, I'm happy to do it now.
We're going to go to public participation, so we can start with the letter.
Sure. To Michael O'Reilly, Planning and Zoning Commission, regarding 205 Monroe Turnpike. I believe that the proposal for a 19,336-square-foot self-storage unit facility on Monroe Turnpike should be denied for the following reasons. The site abuts a residential zone and is located near commercial uses, including retail stores, service station, restaurant, and supermarket. The building is basically a warehouse with interior spaces partitioned for storage units and has no restrooms. Warehouses are appropriate and compatible in our industrial zones. The size and scale are out of proportion. The medical professional office building that was originally proposed for the site is a compatible use. The project does not conform to POCD's goals of preserving the integrity of the town. At the June 20th Planning and Zoning Public Hearing, we learned there is no tenant. A nearby residential property owner asked the engineer if the building could be repurposed if he used, if the use is unable to secure a tenant and the potential for other uses. The engineer's answer was no. Other uses are highly unlikely because, as he explained, the cost to make necessary structural changes to the walls, roof, ceiling, and redesign of the subject system would be cost prohibitive. The building and use is not compatible with others in the commercial and abutting residential zones and would be best located in an industrial zone, and the application denied. And that concludes the letter.
Commissioner Ambrosi, you have another question?
Yeah, how many times on the, here? Well, again, times, how far is the resident from that place?
How far is residential?
Yeah.
So this is my best, best view I have. The house is up here, so if you get approximately. So that, the nearest residential structure is probably 175 to 200 feet away. There's two residences to the north.
Say seventy.
175 to 200 feet, give or take. It goes as close as possible.
I guess I'm watching out. That's good. All right, we'll continue with public participation. At this point, if any members of the public would like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. Anyone online would like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. All right, public participation is now ended. Commissioners, have any other questions?
Yes, sir.
If not, I guess back to you.
Yeah, I guess just in response to the letter that was just read into the record, as everyone recalls, this was designated as a planning development district, in which case we are allowed to specify uses and local regulations. The commission did approve self-storage as a use in this district. I would argue that although it is used for storage, it's not really, it's more of a commercial type of use than, I guess, industrial type of use in my mind. I think the commission was agreeable when they approved a PDB that the self-storage use was appropriate. In this instance, Mike's here, he can attest that at this time, it really isn't the market or an ability to lease out for medical office building, hence why it's no longer on table. Interests demand, which is why we came before everybody for the recommendation to allow it and now for the formal SCP permit to get it permitted before construction.
Want to close the hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Hearing closed. Damn, moving on to the next item is RAA 2024-01.
You missed a gap.
Do we have someone from Sunday here or?
I am, I am here, again, Luke Morrow, filling in for the record.
Let me just read this into.
Public hearing, yeah.
Planning and Zoning Commission, Monroe, Connecticut. Notice public hearing to be held July 18, 2024. In accordance with CGS 8-70, public hearing will be held in Town Hall and with online options. RAA 2024-01, File 1036, Petition Application for Regulation Text Amendment to amend the zoning regulation, Section 6.4, excavation and filling. Astro Land Holdings LLC, applicant, Solely Engineering LLC representative. Notice was published in voices twice on Wednesday, July 3 and July 10.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon. And do you have exhibits?
Let's read the exhibits into the record. The application and plan set by Solely Engineering received June 12, 2024. Municipal Council of Governments and Aquarian notices, June 17, 2024. Nochtalk Valley, Connecticut Council of Governments acknowledgements, June 17, 2024. Metro COG comments letter. July 15, 2024, and an engineering comment letter from James DeMayo dated July 18, 2024.
All right, now what was the plan for this?
They are going to make a request.
Yep, so, so there was a request to modify the regulations for the excavation, fill permit, I believe, to remove references to waivers. There's some legality in regards to be able to grant the waiver. So a formal application or request was made for the amendment to kind of clarify that language, show it doesn't cause problems in the future of any kind of legal issues. I am not specifically working on that project, but I, I've been told several comments and concerns came from James DeMayo late today that we want, we'd like to work through with him before we make any type of formal presentation. So our request to write this forward to the table at the next hearing and then try to work something out and come to, to accomplish what we've been on our best path for, and then present.
Great, that's a good idea. Thank you very much, so we'll move on.
I do have James's comment letter, if anybody would like to hear his comments in support of that request.
In support of tailoring?
Yes.
Do you have to still open to the public to comment, though, right? As we open it?
We opened the public hearing, yes. So I think that's why, if I can read James's comments into the record. The application does not specifically propose any new language, but only provides some examples for the commission to consider, and also eliminates existing language. At this time, I do not support the elimination of any other text in the regulations other than the sections or locations where waivers are mentioned. I do think that this language in question does pose challenges on a significant number of properties located within the town of Monroe. However, the implications for just removing these other sections without more thought or replacement language could pose additional challenges for the town of Monroe. I believe it is in the best interest of the applicant works directly to staff to revise and rework this section of the regulations to have a more fitting and robust excavation and fill section for the regulations. And just an example, one of the things that he's talking about is there's language in there related to grading within 25 feet of a property line. There are absolutely scenarios where that is appropriate, but if you go over a certain amount of fill or square footage in a residential for them putting up a wall, you could also trigger the same thing, of which case then they have to be within 20, they have to be outside of that 25-foot setback, and that doesn't really make sense, which is why the regulations were originally written in order for this commission to have the ability to remove that and as part of the waiver process. However, because of the legality of that now, what James would like to do is he would like to make those conditions, really think through what applications does that make sense? Make sure the language is just a little more robust, so we're making sure that we're not creating more problems within our excavation.
Right. Great, okay. Yeah, it's a complicated issue that needs a little more work before we can bring it to a public meeting. However, since we did open it, Commissioner Condon has mentioned, is there anyone here?
Thank you.
Would like to comment on text amendment. Anyone here or anyone online, please raise your hand. Okay, I see none, so we then, we'll now move on.
And it will be continued, just for clarification, to the August 1st meeting.
Next meeting.
Just to have that on the record.
The next is text amendment, RAA 2024-02, 1037. Now, this is a new text amendment.
Yes, we got that, too. In accordance with CGS 8-70, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, July 18, 7:00 AM. It will be a hybrid, any person meetings at Monroe Town Hall. RAA 2024-045, 1037, petition, application for regulation text amendment to amend zoning regulation, Section 5.4.3, 5.4.6, 8.2.3, R. 5.5.2, D, to allow multifamily housing units within the multi-designed district, MDD district, on one-acre lots or more in size from 15 acres, provided that non-residential uses occupy the ground floor. 715 Main Street LLC, applicant, HJS Projects LLC representative. Notice was published in voices twice, July 3 and July 10.
Thank you, Commissioner Condon. And have any other exhibits?
Yes. So we have the application dated June 25. So we have the application dated June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. We have the referral letters, the municipal referral letter. Letter, the West Cog response, the municipal referral letter. As well as the offer for letter in care. We did get the West Coast response that says. Um, the opinion of West Coast staff is that the proposal is of local interest and with minimum. Um, intermunicipal impact, therefore it is not being forwarded to adjacent municipalities and the regional staff is making no comment. Um, and then we also received a statement regarding M D D S D D regulations from the applicant. If you want me to read that at some point, I'm happy to do so. Um, just let me.
Let's see, we have Attorney Russo with us tonight.
Yes, Chair, Commissioner, it's good to be before you, Chris Russo, looking for some resources. Offices, uh, at ten six. Could I hit? Here on behalf of the applicant um for this text amendment. Uh, this is a text amendment, uh, it's a bit of a work in progress. We have met twice with the Regulation Subcommittee. To review this text amendment and. Discuss what it allows. And also what's the appropriate vehicle for this type of use. And it's kind of what was stated in the readout. What it's seeking to do is to allow multifamily housing units. On one acre lots or more in size. Provided that non-residential uses occupy the ground floor. So it would allow mixed-use buildings. Where it would still be commercial on first floor, but for access lobbies and things like that. To the upper floors, which would be residential. It does not allow for. Those uses to be separated in separate buildings. That there would be a commercial building and then uh and then a solely residential. Buildings uh behind it or somewhere else on the property. It's it's just to have a single uh or I guess potentially multiple mixed-use buildings. But that there would never be a residential only building. Um, and that would be. On lots that are one acre or more. The. The and and to me, this is just my read of him going from the Subcommittee meetings, that seemed to be. Uh. A project that was well received, that that type of development could be well received.
We were looking for something like.
Something like that. The question is where to put it. And in your regulations, that is. And there's multiple places where you allow multifamily. The M D D has a reference to it. And that's where we have initially proposed this amendment. There is a section five point four point six that talks about multifamily within the M D D. That section refers to Article Eight, which is your special exception. Uh, standard supplemental standards where there's a specific section that talks about. Multifamily within the M D D and it designates an area. Uh, that's up to Noah Drive. And on Main Street, so so. So that's one area. It's also referenced in the next section. Uh, of the regs after the M D D, which is your special development districts. Uh, and again, it makes reference, it's kind of. Uh. A glancing reference, it's not really too involved, but it just says projects fifteen acres more in size may be designed to include. Both commercial and residential components. And the feedback that I feel that we've had from the commission is. Where should this type of development, should it be in the M D D? Or somewhere else where the commission felt it had the most discretion? And that it can ensure that approving this type of development in one location wasn't necessarily setting a precedent. For another location. And. Initially, I thought that the M D D and the S T D were both places where this regulation could be located. Uh, and the commission could feel. That was a control because it is. In my mind, it's a zone change, no matter whether it's in the M D D or the S. In further conversations with Subcommittee and also with staff, there is some concern. That. The pieces that qualify for the M D V M D D already. On, uh. Because the the M D D has three standards, it has that you must have direct access to Route twenty-five, one eleven, thirty-four. That you must be within fifteen hundred feet of a state right of way. And that there be a minimum district size of one acre. Um, that could be one parcel or it could be multiple parcels. There are obviously parcels that satisfy that are ready right away. Now, there is, so the question was, do those? Parcels have to apply to you for a zone change to get within the M D D where you would have a complete amount of discretion? Or do they automatically qualify and they're already in it? So they don't, they wouldn't need the approval of the commission placed at the M D D. So. I think that concern. That there might be pieces that would just automatically are automatically in the M D D that would automatically have access to. This residential amendment, this multifamily residential amendment. We are now looking at revising this regulation. We'll be requesting continuance tonight to to work on this and continue to work with staff on the language. But to place that within the S T D. Which essentially is another layer of control for this commission. Because an S T D, I mean, that is, S T D is something that is clearly within your planning discretion. If you are working in your legislative capacity, you are planning when you do S T Ds. And S T Ds are something that uh they've been affirmed by courts. Uh, that commissions have, P N C commissions have the right to establish. They're sometimes called special development districts, sometimes are called planned development districts, they're same thing. But that 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 is within your discretion. And really what it is, is is your planning, and when you, when you do a P O C D, when you do your regulations, you plan on multiple different levels. Sometimes you plan on a townwide level, if you're looking things like the environment, you're looking at drainage. Uh, schools, you look at. Entire, the entire town. Sometimes you'll focus on a neighborhood or an area, you know, studying. Uh, other stuff, something like that, you look, you would focus on a specific neighborhood. And what statutes allow and what case law allows is for you also to look at it at a very, almost like a micro-planning level. Which is the S T Ds and P D Ds. Where you're looking at a specific, it could be one parcel, it could be two, it could be three. And you're you're planning for that specific parcel. So the the. What we, we're going to request a continuance. Um, and what we are looking to do is to basically use the same language, use the same standards that you have. For multifamily. Uh, but place it within the S T D. So that this commission could feel comfortable. That somebody couldn't use. An approval for an S T D multifamily project and use that as precedent, say, okay, well, you also have to do it in this other parcel. On Main Street, because it doesn't allow for that. The, if you approve. S T D one. At one Main Street. And you look at the traffic there and you look at what impacts the gardens surrounding streets, what in the neighborhoods, and you look at and you decide. This is an appropriate place for multifamily. Uh, for mixed-use multifamily development. That doesn't prevent you. From five years from then, three years from then, five years from then, after you've approved S T D one. From not approving it at two Main Street. Because at that time, you can look at it in your planning capacity, you could say, there's more traffic here that's developed over the past three years. And we've satisfied our housing demand for this type of housing. So we don't, there's no need for us to approve S T D two. You can take it by a step-by-step basis and looking at the districts. It's it's something that's utilized by a lot of other towns and cities. Um, I actually, and I'll submit it for the record, have a. Uh. A research report from the state. A legislative research report for the state where it talks about planned development districts. Uh, and the authorities that commissions have to approve uh those types of districts. Um, and also has some description about where it's been applied. Uh, around here, Steel Point, Bridgeport's one where they have, again, they're looking at kind of a micro level. Planning at a micro level down there at Bridgeport, it's been used a lot in Shelton. Um, and so. That seems to be the appropriate location for. This type of project where the commission could feel. Uh, hopefully feel uh. As in control of these projects, be able to look at it by piece by piece basis, develop it by the best basis. That's at least where I think we've gone to after all these, uh, for for the two Subcommittee meetings that we that we've had. Uh, and hearing your concerns.
All right, thank you, Attorney Russo. Um, so it'll be basically the same idea. It'll just be put deeper in the regs so that we have more control. All right, so let's go to the commissioners for questions.
Uh, no questions.
I want to see what people.
That'll be the same, pretty much the same language and the same idea.
Yeah, a lot of, so like a lot of the language with regards to. You know, for instance, on properties less than fifteen acres in size, residential uses must be located in the same structure as a non-residential use. And non-residential uses must occupy the ground floor, except for floor area incidental to a residential use. Including but not limited to lobbies, packages, uh, package rooms, access to upper residential floors. So that a lot, so those standards will basically just say the same, it will just be in the S T D. Somebody will have to apply to you. For the S T D, they'll propose the regulations for the S T D. And then on top of that, they'll submit, uh, you know, a special exception permit for the actual. So that's, it's really changing, it will be changing for you, but we'll make all the changes.
Commissioner, am I in?
I just remember. I don't know if I was at both Subcommittee meetings or just the one that you guys came to. I just didn't feel like we were in favor of something like this. From what I remember.
Well, from the first, I don't know if you were there for first meeting. I knew you definitely were there for the second meeting, I'm not sure if you were there for the fifth meeting.
Thanks for remembering.
A, uh. A building. And uh for a particular piece of property, and there seemed to be positive perception at that meeting. For, again, for it being in one building instead of spread across multiple. Um, and just the design, overall design.
Yeah, I'm still, so again. I think the mixed use is something that could be. That could be something very positive for the town. The issue I'm having with changing regs and stuff like that at this moment. Again, speaking for myself. Is. We haven't seen this come into town yet. There's, there's. I mean. I don't think there's one that's been done. So we, so we tried to limit it to specific standards to kind of get a gauge. On how it's going to affect the town and, you know, I guess we chose, we chose one area already. That we want to do stuff in and. We made it. We made it a certain way to kind of. Kind of do a couple of things with it, A. A purpose of of uh serving a need to. That we needed it. At least I felt that, or I feel that we need it and and to kind of see like how how the first couple go to kind of see how it affects the town. I'm I'm very leery of making it. I I understand we can, we have more control and stuff like that, but I'm still very leery of reducing it down to one acre. Lots personally myself. Especially when we made it a way we 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 want to test the, we want to. You know, we want to test the waters with fifteen acres, you know? Uh, and then trying to bring it down to one, to me is. To me is we're not jumping, you know, we're putting our toes in the water in the ocean, we're not just jumping right into it, so. I don't know, for me, for me, I I'm. I still, I like the way it is currently. I think. I think, um. I think we haven't seen anything that's happened yet with. Other projects in town and we don't know how it affects the town. So to make wholesale changes right away, something that we've adopted. Quite recently, to me, I don't know, doesn't make much sense, but. Again, I'm one of five, so.
Yeah, Commissioner, I I think. You know, with regards to these projects not being built. There could be a variety of reasons for that, one of them, probably one of the principal ones is that this is one of the most, this is the most difficult lending environments that we've ever had.
Sure.
Uh, and. What could also be the issue is some of those projects are ambitious, they're larger, they're ambitious. And and with this lending environment, it is to do a project of that size, it's difficult. Maybe it'll get better in a year, it was supposed to get better this year, or it didn't get better this year, at least not yet. Um, but hopefully in the future it will get better and and we'll start seeing those finally get off the ground. I think the nice thing about the one acre. In opening up for the possibility, because again, you could always shut it down and say no S T D. But it could present you with a project that is much smaller in size, much more limited in terms of the commercial space in the units. That it has a lot more potential to actually get off the ground, it's a lot more manageable project. Uh, and so this would just offer the opportunity for somebody to come and present you with it.
Sure, and and my rebuttal to you is if we get into a a much more lenient lending environment. And we've also changed our regs and now we have some of these smaller ones. And then we get some of these bigger ones, we've also now just increased. Increased a lot of stuff, we've increased traffic, we've been, you know, we, again. Monroe's never done this. And still haven't done it. We have a regulation, but we, there's nothing's ever been executed. So to me, I'm I'm still skeptical on it, that's pretty much where I'm at. But thank you.
Thank you.
And what's that?
Well, my only apprehension, um, like I think we've talked about this as a Subcommittee is, you know, if the commission other than the present. Is making these decisions in the future. Um, I feel as though, you know, the the. Portions of these buildings could become overwhelming with residential uses in them. Um, and at that point, you know, Monroe has a potential to turn into into Trumbull, which I don't think that the residents are appreciative of what's going on over there. Um, so that's what I'm trying to make sure doesn't happen, and I feel like allowing this and then a different. A different group of people end up up here, um, then well, you know, we we kind of owe it to the regs to to allow some of these. I mean, I don't know why I feel like every now and then something gets pushed through just because. And I think it could have an adverse effect on the town. And I think there's a lot of parcels that you're talking about right now that would fall into that. And there'd be a line out the door of people trying to put residential uses on top of these uh. Commercial buildings.
Right, and I and I and I definitely think, you know, there. There could be a lot more applications that come before you, and actually, Commissioner, it was your specific comment at the Regulation Subcommittee that made us look back at it. And where in talking with my client said, you know what, maybe this is more appropriate in the S T D. Because if it was something where you changed the M D D. Then I do feel like there could be other applicants who come in and say, we're also in the M D D. And so you set precedent over there. You got to continue it over here. Whereas the S T D, when we talked it out, we felt, all right, that is definitely a vehicle where. You are, again, if you approve S T D one, you're under no obligation to approve S T D two. And 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 if this is an entirely different commission, they can't really use S T D one, it it just doesn't work, they would just have to approve it. Now, they they could come in and they could say. Mend the regs and say, we are going to do multifamily all over the M T D. But as far as using what this commission would have approved. In an S T D, I don't think it can serve the basis for. A future S T D application.
I understand.
I legally, I I don't think it's certain base, so that that comment was actually one of the main reasons we we looked back and said, let's, let's move this over to the S T D.
Just because there's a market demand, which I totally understand there is, you could see it in Shell and you could see it in Trumbull, just because there's a market demand. Doesn't mean that we need to meet that demand here in Monroe. And I don't know that it's entirely fair to the citizens that bought into what we have here now. So I think we can better dissect the S T D option like you're talking about in Subcommittee. There's more work to be done, so.
Thank you.
Uh, just to echo what was said when we talked about if the commission would be. In favor of doing something like this, which is at the commission's discretion. My only concern was the Main Street Design District. Is a literal geographic hatching on our zoning map. All in my opinion that that Main Street Design District does is tell you geographically where an S T D can be applied. So as we talk about, you know, up. an STD can be applied. So as we talk about, you know, updating and having this live in the STD regs, we also talked about, I'd like to start removing some of the references in the MDD, because the MDD doesn't give you the power, you don't, you don't assign an MDD, we don't grant someone an MDD, and MDD is the overlay district. It just tells us geographically where we can put an STD. And then all the standards, in my opinion, should really live in that STD regs, because again, that gives you full power over the STD as compared to, not that I think you're vulnerable, but if there was any sort of vulnerability of somebody saying, well, I'm in an MDD as a right, I should be able to do X, Y, and Z. I don't believe that was the intentions of the regs. I believe the intentions of the regs is to give you full control by applying that STD. Um, so I do believe that if you were open to mixed use in other areas of town, this would be your best option in order to give you the most control.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I agree with you. If we do want to see one of these done, a one acre project is when we're likely to see done, not 25, 15, or these other projects that we're waiting. All right. So then, um, let's go to the public. Do there any members of the public here tonight who'd like to comment on this application? Please raise your hand. Or if there are any members of the public online like to comment on this application, please raise your hand. Seeing none, then I guess you want to.
I, I'd like to continue it. Um, I think there's a question, maybe we, we would go, there's a meeting, I think in a couple of weeks where we could propose it for that. Um, or if you have a subcommittee meeting in Trump, um, or some other time, we can, we can, we could go back to something.
We need to meet a subcommittee before they.
I don't know if we can do that, uh, to open public hearing.
I mean, we can schedule a sub.
Can we on RIA's?
Yeah, if we opened.
Yeah, I think they can only present new stuff here.
If you opened it here, you can't go back to subcommittee.
Yeah, I think we can go back to subcommittee.
Well, I guess maybe we'll, we can request a continuous in the next hearing and then if we go subcommittee, then we can, you know, we could either withdraw or come back in, or we can, we can.
All right. So let's schedule, I think we should schedule subcommittee anyway for, um, August, since we only have one meeting, let's take the opportunity to use that. So, um, we'll schedule that maybe.
And we'll table this.
If you guys haven't tabled this to August for.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. All right. So we're done with our public hearings. Uh, would you have site development plan? I believe they're here tonight, ready to present SUB 2024-04, 359 Spring Hill Road.
I didn't realize that podium was backwards. Does anybody need that podium turned right?
My bad. I did that on Tuesday and I didn't get it back.
Dennis, Dennis, Dennis.
Perhaps, um, exhibits to me to look at.
Exhibits for this?
So this is a proposed subdivision 2024-04, file number 1227. We have the application and plan set dated July 10th, 2024, and the planning and zoning comment letter uh, dated 7/16/2024, which I can happily discuss after the presentation.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Palowski, licensed civil engineer for Sillman One. Office is located in Woodbury, Connecticut. Here on behalf of the applicant John Paul Development, to talk about four lots subdivision at 359 Spring Hill Road. So just to orientate everybody, this is Monroe Turnpike. Goodwill is off in the corner of the screen. So Goodwill is located here, Palanquin's under Ariel. This is Jersey Mike's, Chapultepec, and Jakes Wayback. And then this is Spring Hill Road on right here. This is the limits of the property. Next thing we're talking about tonight. And right now, this is the subdivision map on the screen. So originally, the property was about 3.67 acres. Client reached an agreement with the property to the rear to gain some additional land to bring it up above the minimum required to do a four lot subdivision. And lot line revision map has been presented to planning and zoning staff and an agreement has been reached between the parts. Um, so that being said, we're proposing four lot subdivision. So the bottom there, screen here, you're going to see Spring Hill Road. There's three standard lots, as I'll call them, or typical lots. You have lot one, lot two, and lot three. And then you have a 25 foot accessway to a rear lot in the rear area. So there's scandal for total lots. It's going to be your typical colonials, uh, 2,500 to 32, 3,300 square feet size, depending on the end user's preferences. Um, we do meet all the regulations. It's about 4.4 acres that are proposed subdivision as part of this application. We're not asking for any waivers or any special requests here. Um, you may be familiar with this property. We've done before you a few times in subcommittee aspects. We were originally looking to do ARR here, but unfortunately, there's just a little bit too much complications with the reg changes to make that happen. So instead of this property sitting idle, we'd like to, uh, see it developed. And again, five right, four lots is the way to go here. So. Uh, just to talk a little bit about houses, uh, proposed subdivision. Uh, we are giving some land in the front to the state or to the city for the town for the right of way. So a small strip along the front. That's just a little bit here. Uh, and then these are one acre, one acre, one acre. And this is about 1.3, 1.35 acres, um, because you can't count the accessway as part of the lot area. So we have to have a minimum of one acre per area. And I would like to point out that this parcel doesn't really have a good spot for open space. Um, there's not connected to any, uh, open space traps. It's not really that large in size. So, yeah, we're going to be doing a fee in lieu of open space. We did receive a couple of comments from planning and zoning staff, one of them being a suggesting appraiser to determine their value of the land, because it is 10% of their valuable land currently, which will be uh, paid into the open space one in town on route in lieu of actually providing physical open space in this property. And we will do so in the next couple of weeks. Have that for you. So the appraiser. So this is the grading drainage plan, the erosion control plan that you see on the screen. This is again, Spring Hill on the bottom. Lot is particularly flat. Um, there's a slight grade change of maybe one to two feet from these front three lots. And then it just goes up on a gradual slope at the rear. So the highest point right here, the rear house is maybe 10, 12 feet higher than the road. It's really not too much earthwork that we're anticipating out here, a massive filling job or anything like that. If you've been out there before, it was previously your SPCA, I think was the name. There was some dog kennels and things of that nature. Um, there's an old house that's pretty dilapidated and pretty bad condition. Um, all of the existing houses, foundations, sheds, kennels, uh, fences associated with that operation are all going to be removed as part of this new subdivision application. And all the solar erosion center controls, you see on the plan, it's still fantasy of that tracking path while designing along to 2002 kind of guidance. Um, one last point I'd like to point out, we are a stormwater plan. All the roofs and most of the driveways are being treated through underground stormwater chambers. So that was a request of town engineer. We are abiding by, uh, the requirements. So this is the utility plan, kind of plan I have for you. All the lots are going to be served by pot of water. There is an aquarium main in the street, which we're going to be connected into. The road's just along the side of the road here, which will be just cutting across the road and tapping into that main. Uh, each one of the four proposed lots will be served by private on-site subsurface sewer disposal systems, also known as septic systems. Uh, we have done testing with the Monroe, in conjunction with the Monroe Health Department. There are suitable soils on site reaching four lots. Uh, so when we go over individual plot plans, uh, they'll also be again reviewed by not only the planning and zoning department, but the health department to check, uh, for any defects. I think that's all I have right now. So I'd like to open it up to any questions that you might have.
Okay, we'll go with the commissioners. Am I right?
Uh, no questions.
Well, you gotta get, uh, what are you open space? You don't have that number.
No, I mean, we were provided in the far rear of the site and get provide access and be uh, like 0.4 acres, which would, you're not really going to be able to do much with that. Um, and it's not ordering. So just to give everybody an idea, this is an existing house, residential property. This is an existing residential property. It's pretty much surrounded on all sides of the residential property, but there's no like direct connection to any existing open space or conservation areas or anything like that. So we think it'd be better suited if we paid the fee and looked.
You don't have that number, right? No?
I don't. I would have to get an appraisal, just that we will suggest an appraiser to get that next. Thank you for the question.
That's all I have. I love Leon. I love you, man. So the back property, wasn't, wasn't that one connected to, uh, Purdy Hill Road?
This property is kind of Purdy Hill, the neighborhood. So this is the lot line for here. So this is a 159, 165 Purdy Hill Road, not part of this application, but yes, that is on Purdy.
But the, the, the back lot that was purchased wasn't, that wasn't?
Uh, no, this is another parcel over here, but there's, there's no connection to Purdy Hill Road. It's only, uh, spring.
Well, then I'm thinking of something different, because I thought, I thought you guys were trying to buy into.
We, that was the original plan.
The yellow house on Purdy.
Yes, that was the original.
It didn't happen anymore?
So our client did purchase this property, but that's a total separate, we're not doing anything with that. We're just here for the four lots division that you see, but if the commission in the future perhaps changes their mind and wants to see ARR here, that's why you see this strip of land right there, that is connected. But at this time, again, we're only doing the four lots.
Oh, okay. So you didn't, so your client did purchase that one.
Yeah, but he's just.
Going crazy.
No, you're not. He's just remodeling the house and that just recently. That just recently happened in the last week. And it's, it's just remodeling the house, not proposing anything.
No, no, no. I see the work going on over there. It's definitely coming along a lot better than, than what was there, which is awesome. So this is, so the SPCA building was in that middle lot?
Yeah. So if you see, it's hard to see, I apologize, a little faint on the screen, but there's like a fence here. This was like where the dog kennels were. I guess I, I wasn't out when it was operational and there's an existing house in the front here where we're tearing down. It's like where we're the tribal.
That's, that's where the SPCA was.
The house, or yes, or wherever the, whoever filthy it was, it's like a little garage here. It's a lot of random little beds and stuff that all needs.
There's some crazy stuff over there. Oh, that's gonna, that's nice. Good. All right. For now, I'm good. Thank you.
I would have liked to have been able to help you guys do something, uh, different with this parcel like ARR, but operating within the confines of our regulations right now, it just seems like it'd be too complicated. So.
Right. In the future, if something arises, you know, we do have that ability. We left a 25 foot strip, but again, at this time, only the lots.
Don't want to make use of it.
Yep. It's just sitting there idle, so.
Yep. I have no questions.
Thank you.
I, I did have a chance to do a preliminary review. They are in requirements to all the bulk standards and the interior lot regulations for lot number four that goes to the rear. Um, as was mentioned, if they are doing a payment in lieu of the way the regulations are written, is it has to be jointly decided upon and approved by both applicant and the commission. So basically, it's just to make sure that it's an appraiser with the proper credentials related to it. So they are going to put forward an appraiser, appraiser for this commission to review. So we are going to have to go into the August 1st meeting. This commission always has the opportunity to turn a subdivision into a public hearing if you feel for some reason the size and impact of it warrants it. So I just bring that to your attention um, for your decisions. Um, and then I had a couple of minor comments related to, uh, one of the lot calculations, but I believe you're within, you're still, you know, within the standards, uh, but just a quick clarification for that. And that's the end of my comments.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then we will continue that.
Thank you. I just want to make one more point. There are, well, this, uh, this I believe, see.
August 1st. Uh, regulations and determinations, we have one uh, application, uh, that we heard earlier, SEP 18-3, still five hundred turnpike, a self-storage building that we can deliberate on. Now, um, I just want to do that until like, yeah, we'll do it slowly.
It's a long walk to the other side of the building. Trust us.
Want to take five minutes? No, you're okay. I'm good. All right. So then, um, how are we leaning on this?
I'm good to approve it.
You're being kind.
Yeah, okay. I think it, I think it looks nice. Uh, a lot of, they're doing robust planting.
Yeah, they are.
And stuff. They've taken everything we've asked into consideration.
I agree with Commissioner Condon.
All right, good. Then we'll wait till, uh, Rob, it's back. It's so hours of all this anyway. Yeah.
Nobody remembers the hours of these.
Just wonder, does anybody know the hours?
All these, all these. Probably closes at 10. No?
I don't know.
It's gonna stop and shop eight to 10.
Big Y closes at 10, South Chad closes at 10.
Um, one thing I do just want to bring to this commission's attention is you did, uh, approve a self-storage facility, um, just a couple of months ago in town. And there was a condition of that, that, uh, you wanted a list of prohibited items to be incorporated into the tenant rental agreements. Um, so just to bring that to your attention.
You're gonna have to do that also.
So I, so as we talked about, so I am prepared, if we do want to vote on this tonight, I was able to, to spend some time today doing that. So that would be one potential condition of the approval that you want to take into consideration.
It's not standard, huh?
No, it's like not in our, it's for it to be standard would mean it would be in our zoning regulations and it's not particularly in our zoning regulations. So we can make it a condition.
There he is.
All right. So we're going to, we're deliberating, uh, on these storage unit. So far, we have four of us up. We with it.
Yeah.
All right. Then we'll direct staff to.
If you want to vote on it tonight, we can vote on it tonight. The biggest issue is just that, um, as part of procedure now, as part of the STD, we say that the STD effective date is going to be when the special exception permit is approved. That's in order to make sure that the STD doesn't get applied to the land, um, until you actually have an SEP. So if you were to vote tonight, you would also have to vote on the effective date of the STD, um, as August 2nd, 2024. And then if there are any conditions of the approval that you would like to consideration, as we just discussed, um, one potential condition could be the list of prohibited items shall be incorporated into the tenant rental of previous.
Cheryl and Tenner motion.
I'll make an motion to approve SEP 2018, 03, A4, file 1598A205, Monroe Turnpike with the, uh, the STD effective date of August 1st.
Second.
Second. And the, uh, uh, condition of approval being the, uh, addition of the prohibited items and tenant agreement.
Second. All right.
Are you second?
Question in the second. And we'll pull the rolls. Diving on my right.
Condon, yes.
You're very good.
O'Reilly, yes.
Hainey, yes.
Westland, yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. All right, all right. We're moving along. We have, uh, two new applications. Uh, well, once, not quite new.
Uh, it, it was just timing of when it came in. So 588 Pepper Street, uh, is, we talked about it briefly. The last meeting is on for a public hearing for August 1st. Um, it's an industrial warehouse at the rear of the building. You guys have seen it before they came in for the sorting and handling facility, uh, change our regulations. They are not applying for that. They're just coming in for a straight warehouse. Um, so that will be in front of you August 1st. Uh, the second one is 615 Main Street, uh, which is Bestin Backyards. There was a public comment, um, about the lighting at Bestin Backyards. Uh, when we went to review what the special exception permit had allowed, it was the actual full removal of all those lights underneath the canopy at the entrance. They would like to not remove the entire thing. So they're coming in for a lighting um, amendment where they basically want to have lighting there, but they want it to be recessed. Um, and that will be in front of you September 5th. Again, just because we only have one meeting in August, um, we weren't able to make it for noticing. Um, so we had to push it to the September meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, not to be a pain in the butt, but that's not something staff could handle?
It's more of like, because it was a comment made by someone to this commission, I wanted to give this commission the opportunity to be able to oversee it. If for some reason you think it can be done at the staff level, I have no problem doing it as a, a minor site. If for some reason you think it can be done at the staff level, I have no problem doing it as a minor site application.
Can we just have staff do it? Can you handle it? Well, we said that. You do that. Yeah. So you do it.
That's fine.
Yes, it's fine with me.
Around the case.
I will let them know.
All right, would you have?
I would like Bill Holesworth to help you with that.
Minute meetings, I have, we have June 20th.
You did get it in your packets.
Do we have any other minute meetings?
Uh, no, because staff have been doing the last couple of meeting minutes and she's been on top of it. So you only have one time.
We'll take, Cheryl, can I motion to, um?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as drafted.
Not promotion?
Second.
Motion by Condon.
Second by Ambrosi.
All was in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed. It's unanimous, meaning it's our pass. Now, we have many zoning battles. 604 Main Street complaints. Kathleen?
Uh, so we have had some inquiries about the status of the permit for this for Main Street. They have gotten their K7, but they do not have a zoning compliance certificate. So they should not be operating. They have assured us that they are not operating. I did ask them to come tonight in order for this commission to be able to um, ask them questions directly. If there were still any concerns, however, they did have a conflict. So I do believe I did check in with them today. They do believe they will wrap up the conditions of the zoning compliance certificate in the next week or two. Um, so I'll give you a status update at the next meeting, but if there is any questions, let me know. I'm happy to reach out.
All right, great. Time to go with the ZER report. Tom?
This is the zoning enforcement officers enforcement actions report by monthly uh, for June and July up to this date, July 18th, 2024. I sent out a request for voluntary compliance on June 3rd, 2024 for 638 Elm Street regarding blight in the form of overgrown grass weeds and shrubs over one foot in length. The property owner called within 10 days and confirmed the matter would be taken care of. A follow-up inspection showed that the grass was mowed. Uh, complaints were received on June 4th, 2024 for 707 Monroe Turnpike, which is St. Jude's. Regarding the several bucket trucks that have been stored there. Um, over the past several weeks, town staff has reached out to St. Jude's regarding the trucks and they stated that they were being stored there very temporarily for about eight weeks in time. And in return, the contractors were conducting tree work in the rear of the campus. Uh, the approximate time for the eight week timeframe will be up around July 26th, 2024, which is the end of next week. Uh, so I will follow up with St. Jude's um, at the end of next week. Request for voluntary compliance was sent on June 5th, 2024 to 596 Finn Hill Road regarding blight in the form of garbage and debris that was bordering property lines. The property owner replied within 10 days of pictures, with pictures showing the property boundary was cleaned up and also submitted a partial boundary survey to show exactly where the property line is. Uh, because that was in dispute between the residents. At the end of last year, on September 7th, 2023, 12 Lima Drive was sent a notice of violation by my predecessor regarding uh, excessive fill on the property without proper permits. The homeowner since then has worked with the town engineer and the planning and zoning department to remove the excess fill. The homeowner submitted a signed and sealed survey to reflect the changes and a notice of resolution was drafted on 610 2024 to state the site has returned to a state of compliance. A request for voluntary compliance was sent on June 11th, 2024 to 37 Parkview Lane regarding the construction of a patio without a zoning compliance certificate. The property is in an RF1 zone and it was determined through the town's GIS system that the patio exceeded the 15% site coverage for an RF1 zone. The homeowner stated he would be submitting a zoning board of appeals application to get a variance for the patio. A follow-up email was sent on July 15th, 2024 regarding the ZBA application. Our response was given the next day, July 16th, where the homeowner stated he hired a land surveyor to survey the property to get the existing site coverage. The homeowner has waited to hear back with the results and then will submit the application once he has the results. A notice of violation was sent on June 18th, 2024 to 181 Hattertown Road for operating an automobile body shop, sale shop within a residential and farming district. It was determined that six separate zoning violations or regulations were being violated. The property owners allowed myself and the wetlands enforcement officer to visit the property for an inspection because there were potential inland wetlands violations as well. The property owners were told to stop operating the automobile restoration business on their property. But the property owners are actively searching for a new location to move their business. Last contact with the property owners was July 9th, 2024, where they stated via email an offer was submitted on a property outside of Monroe and they will move their business there if the deal goes through.
Just to add, I'm sorry to interrupt on that. They are currently working with the inland wetland officer to remediate their inland wetland violations. So they are actively in contact with staff and are trying to remediate.
They, they have been, yeah. Compliant with the notice of violation and are actively looking to fix their violations. Um, let's see. A request for voluntary compliance was sent on June 17th, 2024 to 107 Williamsburg Drive regarding a blighted premises in the form of overgrown grass weeds and shrubs over one foot in length. Uh, the homeowner cut the grass by the requested date of 7/3/2024. Um, and I inspected it and it was in fact mowed. Request for voluntary compliance was sent on July 10th, 2024 to 40 Bagburn Road regarding the housing of roosters on the property without meeting proper setback regulations. After reviewing the property via the town's GIS, it was determined that the property does not have enough space to house the roosters or more than 12 chickens. A response date is uh, July 26th, 2024. It was also determined that there was um, some work done on the house. Um, that, and they didn't pull proper building permits. So the building officials also working with 40 Bagburn to make sure that they get in compliance with building code as well. A request for voluntary compliance was sent on July 10th, 2024 to 120 Twin Brooks Terrace regarding a commercial vehicle with advertising being parked in the driveway of a property in an RF1 zone. Property owner was advised to remove the vehicle with advertising, garage the vehicle, or provide suitable screening per the regulations. The response date is July 26th, 2024. Couple concerned residents have expressed concerns regarding the dark sky compliant lighting at the Stevenson Business District. Most notably 1545, 1565, 1585 Monroe Turnpike. Uh, I went out for an inspection on the night of June 16th, 2024 to evaluate the lights at night. I reviewed the special exemption permits and it revealed that all three of them stated dark sky compliant lighting to be installed as a condition of approval. 1545 and 1585 Monroe Turnpike also had lighting plans that were submitted with the SEPs. 1565 had no lighting plan that was submitted. The lights at 1545 and 1585 do comply with the lighting plans. The lights at 1565 do seem to be an issue regarding dark sky compliance as they shine horizontally into the road and into neighboring properties. I met with the property owners of Stevenson Business District on July 1st, 2024 to discuss possible modifications to the lights at 1565 Monroe Turnpike. Once the modifications are made, uh, the property owners are going to contact me for a follow-up inspection. They did, in fact, email me this past Wednesday, uh, to let me know they did make the modifications. Um, I need to go out there at night to see what the modifications look like to make sure they're not shining horizontally. Um, they did also state that they do shine in a horizontal direction because they do have a banquet hall there and events do run into the night. So they want to make sure that the guests and whoever is there at the banquet hall when they're leaving in 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, 1 o'clock in the morning. They are leaving safely with the lighted park, parking lot. So that is partially why they do shine horizontally into the parking lot. But they do um, seem to shine a little bit more into the road than they should. And lastly, um, 19 businesses have been identified as having prohibited feather flag signs and banners. On July 10th, 2024, all identified businesses were sent a request for voluntary compliance to remove prohibited signs by July 26th, 2024. If the signs, signs stay up past July 26th. I noted that the zoning enforcement officer will confiscate them. And I did provide you guys a list with all 19 businesses. So far, three have reached out to me.
Ryan, what was the feedback from them?
Uh, one of them told me it wasn't their flag sign and he actually told me, uh, the business in the same strip mall that it was. So I need to follow up with the actual business that has the flag sign. The other two that have responded to me didn't seem compliant. They said they're going to remove them. And they asked, you know, what are signs that can be installed on the property? So we went over that.
Good work, Tom. That's the effective part we've ever seen. Thank you very much. All right, where are we? Correspondence? Uh, do you have any? I don't have any. Um, I don't have any commission report. Do any of the other commissioners have any reports?
It's a tough question for Tom. Did you go by Josie Ringro?
No. I haven't heard anything about Josie Ring.
Well, you talked about it. That's on me. That's on me. We've been, we had talked about maybe you going to Josie Ringro. That's my fault. That's not his fault. But can you talk about it now and then we'll have him follow up?
I want to see what's going on with that property. It's a house, a house. It's supposed to be small. It's not huge. It's huge now. But I need to know. It's huge. And then from what I understand, it's like, nothing's going on there. Like, no, it's like it's all pretty torn up.
I haven't received anything. That was him asking 100%.
That turned out to 2,500 square feet. Well, it's like they got a lot of stuff going on over there.
Um, we'll talk to the lane two. Um, and see what they have. I'm going to show you guys closing.
Really? Oh, hello.
It's been framed for you.
Yeah, it's just framed. I think we, they have other violations over there. Something going on.
Okay, we have a subcommittee meeting we want to schedule.
Yes. Do you, do you want to schedule a subcommittee? I, I will tell you that oftentimes people come in and they're like, oh, do we have one? And then it takes us two weeks to get to another meeting and then another two weeks to schedule it. So if we can have one.
At the last meeting, there was quite a list of, um.
Yeah, and some of those staff calls has to do. Um, some of them, I guess the question is, is like group thing wise, there's I think like three of them that are for lack of a better term, like low hanging fruit that just need to be separated out from the rest of the applications that we can do. So at the very least, those can be ready for you. And then we need to look at boats and RVs, which we had talked about. And then maybe the pot containers. And then I need to look at the cluster subdivision reg for, um, the potential, uh, 1536, 1564. So we have a meeting August 5th and then we have another meeting September 5th.
Wait a minute. Hold on. No, August 1st.
I'm sorry, August 1st. We have a planning and zoning commission meeting August 1st and a planning and zoning commission meeting September 5th. Um, so I don't know if we wanted to.
Well, do it like.
Try to do one in between.
Well, I'm not going to be here for the August 1st.
15th, one or two, two weeks after the first. It's a Thursday.
Maybe, I don't know. Your thing's actually great.
23? That's three weeks. Can I just, or is they okay with you or?
Let me double check our town calendar to make sure I don't have anything.
Do you do an old FaceTime? What am I pressing?
FaceTime.
Subcommittee. I'm going to FaceTime you while you're in the hospital. Don't FaceTime like that.
Make sure you record it.
I'm going to FaceTime you while, right? Don't FaceTime me.
Yeah, I think that works. Do we want to try to do six o'clock still again?
Yeah. It works better than.
15th, when we would normally have had a meeting, we will do the subcommittee at six.
Beautiful. And then is there anybody else that's aware that it is not going to be in attendance for August 1st?
Um, I'm going to try to do it. So.
Oh, I guess I could do that. Oh, I forgot. That's an option. Yeah.
Happens. I don't know.
I might do that. Might smear my face all over that thing.
Oh, you. My listen.
Good. Somebody should just mute you.
No. That's not going to be a good night. That's, that's so rude. I meant to do that.
All right. Thank you all. Uh.
Motion to adjourn?
I get it.
To ten, a motion to adjourn.
Third. And all favor?
All right.
All right.